I see Counselor Campbell all right. But I can't hear her.
Yep.
Becky Campbell now unmuted. Position four, stop.
All right, there we go. Now we got you.
Thank you.
We're in position five.
All right, so we've got everybody but Counselor Brennan, I assume.
Yeah, and I'll just keep watching for if he comes up.
Before we get started, I just have a few things to say. First of all, I privately congratulated Counselor Kaufman on her victory, and I'd like to publicly do that as well now tonight. And she ran a very fine campaign and deserves it. So with that in mind, there are others that I'd like to thank and congratulate. I'd like to congratulate Counselor Campbell. You know, bless your heart, you did good. And I'm just glad to see you remain on this council. Also, everyone who did, who ran, whether you won or whether you lost, and I'm excluding myself from this right now. But, you know, I want to congratulate you, simply because you cared enough to want to try to help this city, to do what you could, to be of benefit to it. And to me, that means a lot. There are many people out here, but only few are willing to take up the old banner. And to be able to do that and to try, I think, is worthy of my appreciation, that's for sure, and everyone else. So whether you won or whether you lost, I just want to thank you. I also want to thank Counselor Madison. You know, bless her heart, she sent me a potato gun. And it's pretty empty little gun, made out of steel and everything like that, so it's a heavy-duty thing, not any plastic, so when you shoot someone, they don't have been shot. And so I thank you for that. I thank the county commissioners for their card while I was in the hospital. I want to thank Counselor Campbell, she went by. I was asleep unfortunately, but bless her heart, that meant a lot to me when I saw that writing on the wall. And literally, that's what it was. And I want to thank the city staff, wonderful card. I got a big kick out of it. And as I looked at it, I thought, you know, I'm just this close to trying to duck tape. So at any rate, I wanted to make sure that, you know, I gave thanks where it is appropriate. And that, you know, I'm so terribly proud of all of you. And I'm going to be leaving, you know, next month on the 15th. But I was thinking about it today a little bit. And I've lived in Gold Beach, I think most of you know my hometown is North Bend. But I've lived in Gold Beach for 35 years. And of those 35 years, I've spent 20 of them in direct service to the city. So I think perhaps it has maybe time for me to draw out the passion a bit. But it has been a real pleasure and honor to serve the citizens of this community. With that, I just, sort of bittersweet, sort of bittersweet. But I think I was ready, in fact, I knew I was ready. And with that in mind, I want to thank you for putting up with my little dialogue here, or monologue, I'm sorry. And with that, we'll get into this meeting. I see that Counselor Brennan's iPad seems to be up, but I don't see him.
I'm there.
If you, if you, um... He's probably on the next screen, but he's there. I can see him on our screen. Your screen's smaller.
As long as I'm, that Counselor Brennan and his dear wife, well, the only reason I put up with Counselor Brennan is because of his wife, Margie. I love the heck out of her. But at any rate, bless your hearts, I want to thank them for the call while I was in the hospital, that meant a great deal to me. All that kindness truly did.
You're welcome.
And bless your heart, thank you so much, Larry. And, and Margie. But so with that in mind, let's go ahead. We've got special orders of business. We've got Coos Curry Electric Co-op to present the Beacon Broadcast info, which sounds pretty exciting to me. And so, let's see, Paul, Brennan, who wants to go? Did you guys hear me?
Is that me on mute?
Yeah, you're up.
Okay, thank you. So I'm Brent Fishoff, I'm the CEO and General Manager at Coos Curry Electric, coming on almost two years now since I've been with the Co-op. Mayor and councilors, it's an honor, which is to be able to come and address you this evening and tell you a little bit about our forthcoming broadband project that now has the official name of Beacon Broadband. We, Coos Curry Electric, well, let me give you just a little bit more history. There are about 900 electric cooperatives across the United States of America. And there are, on the order of 150 of them are now, have their own broadband projects up and running or are in the process of constructing broadband projects to their cooperative membership. And about two years ago, my predecessor Roger Meader, he saw this happening across our national cooperative community. And we recognize that here in Coos and Curry counties, there is the same need. We've got a lot of our members of Coos Curry Electric that are either unserved or underserved with broadband service. And we see more and more, and particularly now with the COVID pandemic, it's even more critical that everybody has access to broadband service for education, for medicine, for just to be connected with other people, to be able to work from home and go to school from home. And so, two years ago, we obtained a grant to do a feasibility study to see if it would be possible for us, financially feasible for us, to build a broadband network of some sort. And so, we engaged with another cooperative organization, National Telecom Cooperative Association. And, a rural, National Telecom Rural Cooperative. And they conducted a feasibility study that indeed showed us that it would be a very expensive and capital-intensive project, but it could be financially feasible. It was kind of on the edge of being, being a good business decision. Actually, we wanted to make sure that we didn't put our electric cooperative in any dire risk, but that we did maintain the financial integrity of the electric cooperative. And one of the very foundational guidelines of this from the very beginning is that the Electric Co-op Board has directed that electric rates will not subsidize a broadband project. So we wanted to get some more information, so we engaged another company called Conexon that works exclusively assisting electric cooperatives across the nation with construction of broadband projects. And they have a very specific model that they follow, which is 100% fiber optic broadband to the premises, to every single member of the electric cooperative. Now, if cooperatives did engage with Conexon, they are not, you know, they don't have to follow that model, but that is the model that Conexon puts forward. We were attracted to that model, and so we engaged with them to do a feasibility study for us, a second feasibility study, that essentially confirmed the first. So the first feasibility study had a hybrid, building fiber to the more densely populated areas in our service territory, and then building the fixed wireless, which is basically similar technology to cellphone technology, but it's not a mobile technology, it's fixed, hence the name fixed wireless, that provides internet service that way. So the Conexon feasibility study determined that, again, that it would be very capital-expensive to build this network. And that, and then based off of that information, we have developed a business plan, largely done by Mr. Paul Reckonsong, who we'll hear from shortly. And let me just introduce Paul a little bit. He has a career's worth of building, planning, building, maintaining, and operating broadband networks. And he has, he has, in the past few years, come to Keokale. And as soon as he heard that Coos Curry Electric was interested in pursuing a broadband project, then he first reached out to Roger Meader and then was reaching out to me as I came on board. And so, Paul and I had some conversation, and I saw his passion about broadband and his interest in our region and making sure that we, that, you know, the people of our communities have good internet access. So we engaged with Paul first as a consultant, and then we brought him on as a temporary Coos Curry Electric employee to assist us in this exploration. And so, that, we're, the board, two months ago, as we met, they set a level of funding that they were... The pre-subscription law will allow us to find influencers who can help us to share information about the broadband project and to expand the interest in the project. And finally, the pre-subscription program, when we build this, as I said, it's going to take about three years for us to build the project. That means that some people are going to get signed up well before other people even have fiber before their homes. We're hoping that our very first customers will be signed up by mid-2021, but our last customers won't get fiber in front of their homes for three years. And so, we have to order our construction in some way. And we're using a lot of variables to order our construction, including how much it costs to build to an area, and how much revenue we anticipate getting there, what our permitting issues are, or our construction vendor schedules are, and a number of other variables. One of the variables we will be using is the pre-subscription list. And those areas that have proven interest through the pre-subscriptions will be weighed heavier when we come to establish on our construction list. Next slide, please. As I said, we've got nearly 500 pre-subscriptions, and this map is incredibly difficult to read, I know, on your screen. You can see the little green flags and the little yellow flags spread throughout our entire service area. And the purpose of this is not to try, to make you try to school it really hard at Gold Beach, see if your neighborhood's getting enough pre-subscriptions. But rather, it is to show that our pre-subscription interest is broad across the entire project area. It's not simply restricted to the most rural areas that are most desperate for the service. But you can see down on the very southern end of the project, there's a significant cluster of flags in the Brookings area, which had some reasonably good service down. And so, the interest in our project is widespread across multiple demographics and throughout both urbanized and rural areas. And then the final slide, please, Jody. We're Beacon Broadband, we're here, modeling, this is to say, we're here local, we're a local company. When you call customer support for Beacon Broadband, when the company is up and running and providing new services, when you call, it will be somebody from this region that answers the phone. When you need help, we'll dispatch, we'll dispatch service members from this region. It will be your neighbors and your friends who work for this company. We have a plan, we've spent two years doing feasibility studies and creating a business plan. We're continuing the plan because building this type of a network is not an easy thing to do. But now, we need your support. We need you to look at the pre-registration opportunity. We need you to talk about this project. We need you, I'm grateful, Jody, that this is being recorded, and I hope that, I hope that there are also citizens who are watching live tonight. We need the community to round them behind us and show that you're support. You can show your support by going to the pre-registration. You can show your support by going on to the Coos Curry website and communicating with the board members and thanking them for taking on this difficult and risky project. You can show your support by emailing me or Brennan and telling us what you think of the project. We will also be coming to the city in the next month or two to talk to you about a franchise agreement. We do want to follow all of the rules that are applicable, and we assume that you have franchise agreements in place with Charter and with Zipley. And we want to engage with the city to establish a franchise agreement. We also want to talk with the city about what we can do to most effectively build in your community, what types of neighborhoods and what types of community anchor institutions you feel require service earlier rather than later. And what I'm saying is, we simply will want to coordinate with the city as we progress with this project. That's my presentation. We're going to turn the time back to all of you for questions.
Okay, the first question I have, and if you mentioned it somewhere along the line, and I just missed it, please forgive me, but what are we looking at for projected cost to the consumer?
Thank you. Brent, do you want to take that?
Paul, you can go ahead and take that.
Yeah, the 100 megabit service is projected to be about $55 a month.
$55?
The dedicated service is projected to be $120 a month, and the 400 megabit service sits at about $80 a month. If you have a fiber to your home for internet service, telephone service will be an additional $15. If you only want telephone service without the broadband service, without the internet service, there will be a $30 fiber access fee. We're still in negotiations with our video providers to establish the pricing on the video. And so I hesitate to talk too much about video pricing at this time.
All right, I understand. From what I gather, the low was 55, and the high was what again?
The high is $120, and the low is 55. We will also be offering lifetime services and other types of subsidized services for those who request it or who need it in order to be connected.
All right, thank you, Paul. Counsel, do you have any questions to ask either one of these two gentlemen?
Doesn't look like anyone's raising their hand.
All right, well, okay.
Counselor Madison is.
Counselor Madison, I cannot see her, I cannot see anybody other than myself right now, which I don't mind.
I needed her, you're unneeded.
I was curious to know if maybe outreach to the local real estate board, we're seeing an onslaught of real estate sales, and maybe onboarding those new residents as they're purchasing their homes through the real estate agent, as they're excited to come in and move into our community, might be helpful. Maybe the DMVs and things like that, where people want to work remotely without connection issues, that might be kind of an easy sale. I'd be happy to help promote that to the different groups. And I wasn't sure, it sounded like you want the investment opportunity shared, but it's still kind of on rollout phase. I'm not sure how fast you want that pushed.
Yes, and you're absolutely correct, this is, with all of the comments that we've made, Counselmember, thank you, they're extraordinary. Reaching out to the Realtors is a very important path that we do need to pursue in the near term. I was holding right now until we get to the point where we have our funding committed, before we got all of the Realtors excited about the project. We have had a number of Realtors who have learned about the project and have gone on and have done pre-registration. In fact, Counselmember, have you pre-registered? I see one that has raised their hand and says they have. But the, so we have gotten some of the Realtors who have pre-registered, but we haven't made any sort of push to meet with them yet. And as far, as far as the people moving in, one of the extraordinary advantages that we have as an internet service provider is that we are a child of Coos Curry Electric Cooperative, and everybody who moves in has to have a conversation with Coos Curry Electric Cooperative. And so we will be taking advantage of that conversation. But if we have the Realtors sharing that in advance, that would be even better. When we talk about that Airbnb is another type of transient lodging, we absolutely want to reach out to them. And if the city has a list of the transient lodging operators in the community, that would be a fantastic, and you're allowed to share it. That would be a fantastic tool for us to be able to use to reach out to them as well. Right, Counselmember, thank you, we will take you up on helping us to get this word out.
Counselor Madison, did you have anything further? I can't see anybody on the screen right now, so...
I can see you guys, but for whatever reason, on the iPad, you're not showing up for the mayor, but I can see you. So just, you know, wave and I can see you.
And then the administrator will go ahead and let me know who is up, and will go ahead and acknowledge that I do believe that Counselor Kaufman had something that she wanted to ask.
Thank you, sir, I always have a question on. My question is, when I looked at the website, when somebody first asked me about this, the thing that kind of made my brain go tilt was, it's a for-profit entity subsidiary of a nonprofit co-op. So that really made my brain tilt. So is there some logic behind that that'll help my brain be untilted?
Sure, there is, there is some logic to that. What we have found, so we are modeling, using models that we have found have been successful with other nonprofit electric cooperatives. So you may have noticed in the press recently that Douglas Fastnet purchased a small fiber, fiber network called Comspan that is in, serves the city of Bandon, Keokale, Royal Point, and Greensport, and then some in Roseburg. Well, Douglas Fastnet is a for-profit, wholly-owned subsidiary of our neighbor's Douglas Electric Cooperative. And what we found is that is a successful business model, wherein if the for-profit subsidiary turns a profit, then that profit goes back to the benefit of the members of the nonprofit and adds value to them. And so, just as you as members own a part of Coos Curry Electric, you will have that same benefit from Beacon Broadband because it is a wholly-owned subsidiary of the Electric Co-op. And everything that we have done in organizing that has been embedded through experience of others and through our attorneys and tax accountants. And so, it is perfectly acceptable and core decision for the plans that we have. And Brent, if I could just add two things real quick. If we organize as a cooperative, as Coos Curry Electric Cooperative is, profits from the broadband subsidiary that are already, would not endure to the benefit of the cooperative, they would endure to the benefit of the broadband cooperative. So those members living outside of the Coos Curry Electric territory would receive dividends just as those members living inside the cooperative area do. By being a wholly-owned, for-profit subsidiary, any profits that the broadband company generates go back to the parent organization that actually took the risk to fund it. The other advantage of being the for-profit subsidiary is we're not restricted by the geographic boundaries of the electric cooperative itself. We have the ability to step out and provide service to other neighboring areas.
Counsel Kaufman, did that explain that?
It did, thank you. I think I just realized what the problem was. All three of us are using the internet. That...
Oh, you mean as far as us being able to see?
Yeah, I think that's what it is.
Counsel, anyone else have anything that they would like to ask? I'm just going to go around the board a little bit. Counselor Madison, do you have anything further?
I just wanted to thank Coos Curry Electric and the team for spearheading this opportunity before somebody outside of our region took the opportunity to capitalize on such a needed utility. Thank you.
And I would like to thank you, Counselor, for volunteering and being willing to help. Counselor Campbell, do you have anything that you would like to ask or say?
She said no.
All right. Let's see, let's see, who we got? Counselor Pagano?
I basically would just echo Counselor Madison. I'm more than happy to help as well with the Board of Realtors, as I'm part of it. So I can definitely help along with that and try and get you guys more support along that way. But thank you very much for your presentation.
All right, thank you, sir, for also volunteering. And Counselor Brennan, what do you have, sir?
I would like to just say this is a very exciting project. And I did complete one of the interest forms today online, so I'm looking forward to the information as things progress. It sounds very exciting.
All right, thank you, sir. If there is no other questions or comments to make, then I'm going to go ahead and let both Brent and Paul go. And I want to thank both of you gentlemen. It was very, very, well, informative. And I personally would love to see this succeed as well. So thank you, gentlemen, and have yourselves a good rest of the night if you can.
Thank you, we appreciate the opportunity to come and present and for your attention and interest this evening. And we look forward to sharing more with you about the project in the future.
Good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on. We do have a request by Caitlin Coleman, Curry County Fair Manager, to address the council. Caitlin, are you here?
She is.
I am, hi.
Hi, how you doing?
Oh, we're doing well. You know, 20% of the house fair share of 10% on all of us, so we're making it through.
That's okay, good. Well, you've got the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. I am a little bit scripted because I have... I am a little bit scripted because I have total memory and I'm all forgettings, so pardon the scripted voice. But as many of you know, I am new to the position as manager of the fairgrounds starting at the beginning of February. We also have several new board members. The event center in the past has been opposed to a huge amount and a huge variety of events for our community for a really long time. This consistent prolonged use means that we have repairs and updates and upkeeps that need to happen to our buildings. The limited budget that the event center runs on does not allow for many of the buildings on the property to be cut up as well as anybody would have liked. And unfortunately, this means that we've reached a point on a lot of our property that minor repairs and upkeeps just isn't enough. It's not going to cut it anymore. Several years ago, you, City Council, recognized the needs that the event center was facing and allotted us a percentage of the TLT tax. So first, I want to say thank you. Thanks for being the first one willing to step up and support this venue. Before I was here, I have so many memories of this place and I want my new sofa. Yes, I was putting, funny that you said for us. I know that you have seen it kind of sit quietly for a few years, but we hope that you're starting to see the fire just starting at the event center. This year, in the last four years or so, your funds have raised almost $300,000 for the event center through the TLT tax. Because of that, this year, we've been able to make two really major repairs on two important roofs on our property. Doja Street, which was recently finished, and Showcase Building, which hopefully, fingers crossed, is going to be taken care of this, starting this upcoming week, as long as the weather remains well. The current balance that we have sitting in the city TLT fund is somewhere around $110,000. We have another roof project coming up that's going to be a critical fix. Our arena roof is currently falling apart. There are large holes in the metal and chunks of insulation falling to the floor. This lets the water to the doors pour in and then these huge puddles and start causing some major damage to the floor and the arena. The arena itself has a great potential to be opposed for a variety of types of events, including rodeos, working competitions, equipment shows, different working competitions like logging or things like that, archery, all that kind of stuff. Also can be circuses and concerts just to start making deals. We currently have a Jif Kana Force event that's in the planning stages. It's going to be hosted by a roof station of Hope Valley Beach Farm. It's set to begin in January and will be held month-to-month for four months. And it already has units from multiple places outside our county even, across rural Point, Hus County, outside of this county. It's going to bring in people for a couple extra days a month. The repair on the roof that we're looking at is looking to be somewhere between $280,000 and $360,000. With the income that we generate on our own, it would take a long time for us to be able to put that money aside and pay for a repair of this size at one time. In the meantime, we would end up facing a lot of potential income from events that I've mentioned. We would be unable to serve the community in providing different events and entertainment, also a venue for events. And also, the damage is going to get worse and the repair cost is going to get higher. So I'm here today to ask you to put your trust in us again and recognize our need once more to ask for a loan against our future TLT tax revenue to make the repairs on the roof now instead of waiting. With an estimate of approximately $360,000 and an estimated balance of $110,000, the loan that we would be asking for would be around $250,000. With the numbers I received from Jody, the yearly average of the TLT revenue sits somewhere around $65,000 for us. It would take just under four years to repay based on those numbers. The repayment scenario could change a little bit based on what the accost of the roof ends up being as well as what the actual TLT tax income turns out to be. Because as we have seen this year, it surprises in so many ways and the TLT is shockingly higher than ever, anyone ever could have expected, I think, with COVID. The project for the arena roof is exactly what you guys said the TLT taxes would be used for and is all directly aligned with our capital instrument and our master plan. Our other major improvement repairs that we have across the board are also being supported by the county in the form of the TLT tax that they have provided for us. For the past fiscal year, the allowed amount for the county TLT funding that we have for the 2020 claim, the fiscal is currently sitting at about $191,500. And these funds could potentially help support the roof. However, I prefer me those sitting in case we have major repairs to come up, which always happens. For example, we weren't planning on doing showcase roofs this year and when we were taking the inside showcase, we had found a major leak and the hole had to do with that. And so I want to make sure that we have funding available to address those major things that need to happen that could potentially be seriously damaging for the use of the event center as well as to help develop other areas in our capital instrument and master plan such as the signage, like our new sign is going up this week. It just started today and I'm super excited about it. Updated siding so our walls aren't rotting out, which is what's happening on showcase, that's getting repaired here soon. Taking to bring the whole place back together with our new field, office equipment that is currently falling apart, and other major improvements that need to happen. So the support and partnership from the county as well as everything that you as a city have stepped up to do for us are hugely instrumental. Without you guys and your support, we would not have the ability to keep the event center alive and moving forward and providing for our community like we are. And I would just like to say that you stepping up has made a huge impact on me and my ability to do this job. So I would love to ask for your support again in helping us get the arena roof taken care of now so that we can continue to provide for our community and offer more events as we look forward to this new normal COVID.
All right, thank you, ma'am. You know, I'd like to go to, real quickly, to Counselor Campbell. I know that, you know, the Fair, that center has been very dear to you and I would like to get your thoughts on all of this, please.
I'm going to unmute you, Becky, or ask you to unmute. Okay.
Did you hear me?
She can hear you.
Okay.
Okay, you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have been working closely with the event center for quite some time and was actually, I fully support this. All you need to do to try and grasp the gravity of this roof situation is to go visit the horse arena. There is literally a huge hole in the roof that is causing damage. So if we, you know, if they don't get this money, I'm concerned that they're going to lose the arena.
It's possible.
Yeah. So I think, I think it's a necessary thing. It's actually something I recommended that they come to the city and ask to loan money, you know, if there was an auction available to them.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your candor and all of that. Counsel, do you have any questions that you'd like to ask Caitlin or any comments? What are your thoughts on all of this? Once again, I can't see anybody, so I'm going to kind of go around the room a little bit, so to speak, and ask Counselor Madison what her thoughts are.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm curious to know, have we run any kind of numbers on that loan and how long that would take to pay back? Is there an interest rate on that? I think something mentioned three years. How secure would that loan be?
So some are based on, what my thought was, obviously will also be dependent on what you as council are comfortable with and decide. But if we base it solely on the repayment through our future TLT tax funding, the average that I was seeing based on the information that Jody provided in the packet was an average yearly tax income of around $65,000. One year was less, a couple of years was higher, so I just kind of looked somewhere in the middle. And if we did $65,000 a year without any interest, would be looking at just under four years. And so if we added interest, obviously that's going to add a little bit more time to the payback period with the understanding that the best way for us to pay this loan back would be based on future TLT taxes because of our limited income and our limited budget that we face, especially as we continue to move forward in a world of COVID.
And so if the TLT revenues are as lucrative as they have been this past quarter, is there an opportunity to consider paying the loan off sooner possibly?
Yes. What I would like to suggest would be to hold it completely on our TLT taxes. Whatever we get in that fiscal year that is allocated to the event center would go directly into repayment as a loan.
Okay. Caitlin, I want to thank you for your passion and your commitment to the event center. It's so refreshing and very exciting. All the buzz in town and just the partnerships that you've built throughout the community. I really appreciate you.
Thank you. I appreciate your support and bringing me to the show.
Thank you both. Before we move on, the administrator has something that she would like to add.
I just wanted to explain a little bit about how the funds work. And Counselor Campbell had actually come to me last month and was talking about that possibly that the fairgrounds might want to try to get, like a loan, like go out to a bank or something and get a loan. And I said, well, you know, we have the money. I mean, they were talking about pledging the money that was coming in, which actually, technically, the money is our money. It comes to us. It's not like held in trust for the county in any way. It's the city's money. We have allocated those funds to assist them, so it's technically our money. So technically, the money would be, actually, we would be loaning it to ourselves because we, not necessarily them, because it's not their money. But basically, they were just asking for us to front the repairs and then, which is what we had envisioned the money for to begin with. So rather than, like this first project, we had saved up some money before they were ready to do a project. Well, now they are, so it wouldn't really be them getting the loan from us. It's our money. If we hold it, it's our money. But it just didn't seem to make sense to me for them to try to go out and get a loan and then pledge our money as their security for it. It's like, okay, well, if they're going to go out and get a loan, why don't we just try to loan it? Why don't we just front the money, pay for the thing, and then as the funds come in, that those funds get paid back to ourselves?
All right, so what you're saying, Administrator, is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but what you're saying is that Caitlin's request is feasible?
That's why I told him to, you know, come and ask. You know, certainly that's, the way that you guys had set up how those funds would be distributed is the ask had to be to the council. All the other promo stuff, the budget committee sets the budget, but then the city administrator, the tax administrator, I make the actual expenditures. But for that 1% fund, the council had it where the council decides how they spend that money. So, yeah, so the ask had to come to the council.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Counselor Brennan, do you have anything that you'd like to state or answer?
Well, yeah, it does make sense that we would, I mean, they would use their own money. Basically, they would use our money. Rather than go out and get it secured by that money, it would make way more sense if we just do it from our funds. So I think it's something that's necessary to keep things from deteriorating further and also then be able to use the facility to raise more money. So I think it's a good idea.
All right, thank you, sir. Counselor Pagano?
I think it's a great idea. I would rather them to use the funds from us instead of having to go out and get a loan. I love that Caitlin is jumping on this and going and running with it and taking off and doing amazing things. The new sign is absolutely awesome already. I only saw one side of it today, but it's great. So keep up the good work, and I think it's a great idea.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I know that I've already heard from Counselor Campbell, and I know I'm allowed to hear from Counselor Kaufman. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm not quite as excited about it, partly because it's a surprise to me. I wish it had been in the packet that they should have asked for a loan because then I would ask you the kind of questions that you could have answered. So I'm going to ask the council not to make a decision tonight to maybe wait till we have some numbers in front of us. We haven't seen a financial report in quite some time, that's its budget. And so, you know, we just did audits, so that probably won't be out till January, maybe? I just heard January. So we don't know where we are with the audit. And I don't know where our fund balances are. I'm concerned about loaning money out when we may need it for a project that we really want to, like we did for the housing project, loaning it to Urban Renewal. So those are things that first came to my mind, but I'm still kind of in shock because I wasn't expecting this request tonight. It looks like they've spent about $183,000. If there's $110,000 left and $293,000 has gone in.
Now, when we say "they," it's our money. We are funding it.
Look, we've already given them a check for $183,000.
No, we do not, the money, we pay the bills.
Oh, so you made the bills directly?
It stays with us. They ask for a project to be funded. We are the agent. We pay everyone. Caitlin was like the project overseer for the re-roofing. But as far as the contract, the bid letting, all of that, that's all us.
So we didn't bring them, so we actually pay?
No, we do everything. That way, when our records are audited, our auditors see how the money was spent.
So my other thought was, had anybody thought about contacting like CCD and seeing if they would be interested in funding it? If they could do that in a relatively quick way? With the guaranteed funding and possible collateral, that might be an easy one to do. And then we wouldn't be using our funds. That might be for one of our projects. And again, I don't know how much money we have left in our reserve fund. And I know we're using our reserve funds to make more interest, and I don't know when we need our reserve funds. So if we could maybe get those answers by next month and maybe in the meantime, somebody could talk to somebody like CCD and see if they have funds available for something like this. And then maybe you could do a 10-year repayment plan and then it wouldn't all go to. You'd still have some cash flow for other things, possibly.
Now, when you say you have cash flow?
Well, we have cash coming in, and then if we were pledging toward the loan...
But then it would be out of them.
I would want them to do the loan with CCD and we could guarantee the payment, which would mean that you would make the payment. But then if something happened, we're not going to hook the loan to the event centers. Just a thought, again, I just heard about this the very first time a few minutes ago.
Well, I didn't want to put in the packet because I wanted them to address the council. They came and asked about this and I said, well, that's going to be something that you should probably ask the council. So I didn't ask for any details because I wanted them to talk to you about it. So, but as far as, that's why I included the TLT information in there to see what, you know, what historically that 1% has brought in. And like Caitlin said, you know, on average, it's about $65,000 a year. But as far as, do we have, $240,000? said, you know, on average, it's about $65,000 a year. But as far as, do we have, $240,000, just off the top of my head, we have about $1.5 million in reserve in the sewer reserve that, you know, they said it's the sewer reserve to make our payments and other things. But if the council were interested in, and again, it wouldn't be that we would give them money. It would be that we would be, again, the project, whatever, we would do the bidding, the payments would come from us. That $240,000 would be paid back to the sewer reserve from, and I would say, I mean, and I'm just spitballing here, but I would say monthly, like the revenue that comes in there, it just goes directly into the sewer reserve, not like making an annual payment that just, until that 240 and whatever interest rate, you know, we would want to loan to ourselves, because technically, we could be loaning it to ourselves, not to them. We would be fronting the money to ourselves to pay for a project for them, whatever interest rate we were going to charge ourselves. But I would say that just every month when the money comes in, it would just go into the sewer reserve rather than into that 1% fund, until that 240 principal was paid back, or however much it's going to be. That's what they're speculating. There's $110,000 cash in that fund right now that's left from the roughly $290,000 that we've raised over the last four and a half fiscal years. So there's $110 cash right now that could go towards the roof.
Right. The project is estimated between $280,000 to $360,000. So if we took the $110 sitting in reserve right now off, that's $250,000. That is a high-end estimate, and we won't know the real number until we're able to put it out to bid.
And again, we would, the city would handle that bidding process. And the reason for that is because we're the ones with the cash. We've got to ensure that the public contracting rules are, you know, that we follow all of those. So technically...
Administrator, this is Counselor Pagano. Sorry. That's not including any funds that are coming in for this year yet, correct?
That's, as of the end of September, I believe, but let me just double check that. On page 11 of your packet, yeah, that's through the first quarter of this fiscal year. So for July, August, and September of fiscal year 2021, that fund has brought in approximately $35,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Administrator, what is your suggestion on all of this?
Well, like I said, that's why, you know, when it comes to expending the funds in that fund, if that's a council decision, that's not mine.
I understand that, but I'd like your opinion.
Well, okay, my opinion, and that's part of the reason why I told Counselor Campbell and Ms. Coleman to bring the request to you, is that if they go out and get a loan, even from CCD, unless it were a 0% loan, where we, that fund, is going to be paying that interest. It's like, okay, if we're going to pay interest, it would be better to pay ourselves. And I do understand what Counselor Kaufman's concerns are about what are the fund balances for our own purposes, because obviously, we don't want to short ourselves. And like I said, off the top of my head, I want to say that there's $1.5 million in the reserve, in the sewer reserve right now. There are other reserve funds, but their balances are much smaller. And maybe that's an option, is one of the other reserve funds could make the loan.
So is the one and a half cash on hand? Because I know we already loaned several places money in our own interim funds.
Right.
But I can't remember how many of those are.
There was a small one to the general fund to buy the SCBA equipment for the fire department. There were two loans to the street fund. One of those was paid off at the end of, at the end of last fiscal year, so going into fiscal year. But that one was renewed because of the Grizzly Mountain slide. So basically, the streets we were got paid off, but then the slide. The, five years ago, we paid off the Highway 101 loan with the state for the sewer slip lining that was done in the mid-ots. And that one actually came out of four different funds to get, because that payoff was about $2 million, I believe. The largest one is the sewer reserve, but the building reserve, there were two other funds, water reserve maybe? Yeah, water reserve was the other one.
We did a loan for Urban Renewal and a loan for the visitor's.
Yes.
Tammy, I can't hear you. Will you talk louder?
Yeah, we did a loan to the visitor's center because we had a cash flow issue, and we did a loan for the housing project for Urban Renewal.
And that was the first payment for the URA loan for the Jordan, for the White's housing project. That was last fiscal year. That was $150,000. The approval was a line of credit, I want to say up to $300,000, but the first payment was $150,000. And I do have copies of all of those.
Right.
So those funds have annual payments that come into them, and I can, I can put a spreadsheet together for you, because I have to do it for the auditors anyway, of what the balances are, each one, and what the expected is.
So you should have one for the auditors to...
Pardon?
Didn't you just do an audit?
They look at the individual ones, but I would put one of all, all of the loans on one page so that you could see that.
And just cut to the chase here a little bit. How critical, I guess another way of putting that, how fast, if we are to respond to this, how quickly do we have to respond? In short, I agree with everyone here, and I know Counselor Kaufman as well, and she's brought up some good arguments. But everybody agrees that that event center is important to the city as well as the county, and it is something that we want to be able to ensure that insofar as we are able to continue to be a viable operation. In short, it's important to us.
I think the timing would be a Ms. Coleman question.
Pardon me?
Mr. Mayor, I think that would be a question for Ms. Coleman as far as the timing, like how...
Well, that's it. That's what I was getting around to with her.
Yeah.
So what are we looking at here?
Go ahead, sir. So first, I would say that, Counselor Kaufman, I appreciate your comments and terms, and I understand where you're coming from. By all means, I totally get what you're saying. This is a new topic for you guys to be taking in and in a large chunk of changes. I would often that down by any means. My concern would be if we wait to the, I mean, the arena's not going to completely fall down in the next three months. However, the safety is a major concern, especially as we're looking at getting into the wet rainy season. What's happening with the insulation is that all the holes that are in, the metal, are allowing the rain to pour in, not even speed, but it is pouring in. And so, you know, is it all the insulation causing it to be super heavy and start falling? And because, even though we haven't been having any major events, partly because of COVID, but partly because of the roof situation and the concerns of safety, even though we haven't had those big events, we still have our fourth quarters that are riding and things like that. And we have, like I said, we have events that are planned for January. We have potential to get the roof done before that, if we're able to get approval and get this process started. But there's major concerns of is this wet insulation falling? What is it all on top of that one?
Yeah.
Or something like that. It was, if that would be...
So in short, somebody said that.
And so I would hate to have to completely just shut off the arena, which is, if we don't get a case in pair soon, that is what I'm going to put forward, that we can't use the arena until then, because it makes me super nervous to have people in there.
Counselor Madison has her hand up.
Counselor Madison.
Counselor Brennan's had his hand up for about 10 minutes, and I threw it in the chat, but I don't think it...
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Counselor Brennan?
Wouldn't that be awesome?
Sorry, Larry. You're like portrait, so I only see your face.
Is Counselor Brennan willing to speak?
Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Madison. What I'd like to say is this 1% of the funds is dedicated to the fairgrounds, period. It's not going to go anywhere else. It's not going to change. It's not going to be spent by anybody else. And it sounds, it's very silly to think that we should go outside to borrow money to spend interest when we have it. So my opinion is, let's get it done as soon as we can. And as far as the suggestion of the monthly payments coming back, that's a good idea, so that the loan would be being paid back immediately every month. I don't, I just don't see a delay, especially if they're subject to lose events in January.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Once again, I apologize. I could not see you.
And that was my fault. I didn't see you.
So iterate, but thank you for the comment. All right. So what I'm curious about is, what are we, what can we do tonight?
Well...
Ms. Mayor.
Counselor Kaufman said that she didn't feel like she had enough information to make a decision tonight. The other counselors, it's up to you guys. I mean, if you want to make a decision tonight, somebody would need to make a motion and put something in a motion, you know, like what the specifics would be. Or Counselor Kaufman has some valid concerns, and I would be happy to get that information together as quickly as I can. But ultimately, it's up to you guys what you want to do tonight, whether that's postpone a decision or make a decision or...
Counsel, are you prepared to make a motion or a decision tonight?
Okay, Counselor Brennan does have his hand up, and I did see it.
Counselor Brennan does?
Yeah.
Counselor Brennan?
I understand they don't have the final figure yet, so, but I would hate to waste the next one. Can we make a motion without the amount?
That's a good question.
I mean, you know, I mean, I wouldn't go like up to such and such. But even that's just a guess. We don't know, you know? So I don't know how we can, I would like to make a motion, but I don't know the value or the funding portion.
I do have, if it's helpful, I do have a, an estimate that was given to me by one of the companies that will be putting a bid on when we get to that point. And let me just pull it up real quick so I can tell you exactly what it said.
And then Counselor Madison had something to say also.
Counselor Kaufman also.
Okay.
So the amount that he put on his estimate, and this is a matter of tricky construction, it's a group company that was recommended to us by Gold Beach Lumber, and he is also going to be put in our flooring and showcase. His estimate is at $320,000.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Counselor Kaufman, you've had your hand up for a while.
I think I can answer Counselor Brennan's question. I think what...
For example?
Later?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think I can answer Counselor Brennan's question. I think what the majority of the council wants tonight is to move forward. Shake your heads, yes or no? Yeah, okay. So I think we would just make a motion to move forward and then formalize it at the next meeting, because then Jody can run the numbers, excuse me, Administrator Fritz can run the numbers. I think we've been doing it at 3%, but he can double check that for us, because I think some of them might have been one. I can't remember. So that might be the way to word the motion, and I think Counselor Madison wanted to go next.
Counselor Madison.
Oh, thank you. I just, I wanted to mention that what we could do is make a motion not to exceed $350,000, and if it looked like we were going to go a little beyond that, we could amend that or update it to a later date.
Good.
Thank you, ma'am. That's not a bad idea.
Except that it wouldn't have to be, because we have $110,000.
Yeah.
So if the total amount is 350,000, you could say the loan amount to the fund, the loan amount to the fund would be not to exceed 250,000.
Yeah.
So that's it.
May I ask what's...
Pardon?
Would this project go out to bid, or would it automatically be a work on the contractor that's going to do showcase?
Because of the, because it's over a certain amount, it's over $75,000, it would have to go out to bid. So...
So it could actually come back cheaper. Have we by chance asked, is the rest guy roofing that's doing DOSH right now?
The one, the roofing company that did DOSH is Lawless Construction. They were a contractor for a different company. And we have, what they, they're going to be doing showcase next, and we have asked them to submit an estimate or a bid for the arena as well.
That would be great, because if they keep the equipment here, it would cut transportation costs, and they're familiar with our environment. Maybe we could get that project done quicker than we need, but...
Well, the company that has already given us the estimate, he is, either company would be fantastic, let's be honest. Like, we've experienced with both of them. They're both going to step up. We haven't gotten an estimate yet from Lawless, but the company that has given us the estimate is ready, ready to go. He has been having conversations. He's very passionate about what we, he's been having conversations with other professionals and experts around the state. And I asked him before our last board meeting last week how long it would take for him to complete it, and he said as soon as his materials were near, it would be him probably less than two weeks.
Thank you. Real quickly, Counselor Brennan, do you have what you need as far as the information served to make your motion?
I think I do. I'll try it.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Is it up to me?
Yes, sir.
I'm ready. I'd like to make a motion to loan the fairgrounds up to $250,000 at a 3% interest rate from the city funds to repair the arena roof.
All right. Thank you, sir. Yes, go ahead, Administrator.
It wouldn't be, it would be the city loaning it to ourselves.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it would be amend the motion, I apologize.
Go ahead, ma'am.
amend the motion to, instead of, say, the fairgrounds loan the money to the event center on the beach fund?
Fund. Yeah.
Is that okay with you, Counselor Brennan?
If we amend the motion, Counselor Brennan, okay, to event center on the beach fund, okay, at 3% interest, up to $250,000?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for that motion, sir. Do we have a second? Counsel, can you hear me? We need a second to the motion.
I will second the motion, Mr. Mayor. This is Becky Campbell.
Thank you, ma'am. Motion has been made. It has been seconded. Discussion.
I just got one question on discussion, Counselor Pagano here. Do we need to put a timeframe on that or no?
I don't know. I think that would be pretty much open-ended, wouldn't it?
We, the governments can loan money to ourselves in our fine loans and not to exceed 10 years. So...
Okay. So it's pretty much open-ended. It's 10 years.
Well, I would say when, if this motion passes, I will put together an amortization schedule for everyone based on the projected revenue, because what we'll do is we'll have it make payments monthly.
Thank you, ma'am. That sounds good. Counselor Kaufman?
I just want to make a clarification. Well, the other thing, we could have proved it next month perfectly, and I'm already...
Yes.
Is this going to be a prevailing wage job?
Yes.
I don't know if the contractors know. I don't know if the contractors know that.
That's part of the reason why I say that you have to go through the formal bidding process.
Because I know we don't want to do that paperwork.
Yeah, no, they, on jobs under a certain amount, they have to do the prevailing wage.
Yeah, but somebody has to investigate it.
They just have to provide us with their, it's not like the wastewater treatment thing, they usually only make two payments, like the one on the DOSH one, it was just a two-week thing.
The project they helped with in Gwannston, they had to actually interview the employees and make sure that they were paid.
Excuse me, Counselor, I just got something across the screen from someone, Chris, they're having a difficult time hearing you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what I was saying was, with the prevailing wage, I had heard that some projects have to actually interview the employees to make sure they're getting paid what they said they're getting paid. So I don't know if this is a big enough project for that, but I know it's a headache.
All right, any further discussion? Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Question?
Okay, I'm going to do, I'm going to do roll call, everyone, sorry, just so that I make sure I get everyone. So Counselor Madison, yes, that was a game?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Brennan?
Yes, aye.
Counselor Pagano?
Aye.
Counselor Campbell?
Aye.
Counselor Kaufman?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed by, nothing. Caitlin, hope you're happy with that.
I just want to say thank you. I cannot be more grateful for the support that the city and the Campbell has shown for the Events Center, I really appreciate it.
All right, thank you, ma'am, and also thank you for being here tonight with us.
Thanks for having me.
You have a good one, thank you, Caitlin.
Thank you.
And I'll get stuff to you this week, Caitlin, okay?
Sounds great, thanks.
All right, good night.
Good night.
All right, we have a public hearing now, and this is ordinance number 671 amending the business code for manufacturer, well, the food places.
Okay, so we need to open the public hearing, and then I will explain what this is.
The public hearing is open at 7:59 PM.
Okay, so I would just like to say that last month Counselor Kaufman actually had asked me, shouldn't this be an ordinance? And I said, no, because it's like the chicken ordinance, where we just did a resolution. And when I contacted the attorney, he said, this needs to be an ordinance. So that's why you're seeing this now. So I took the resolution that was adopted by the council last month, and the attorney suggested that we incorporate it into the business code, which includes the business license, the sign code, the TLT. So basically, I have put together a new chapter for the business code, and this will be, the name of the chapter is the Mobile Food Unit Business License Code. So some of the formalities were stuff that was already in our code, and I just incorporated that. And then the requirements for the license and the application, that was all the stuff that was in the resolution. So the reason why we have to have a public hearing before the ordinance section is because it's an ordinance. So if there's anyone that has any questions, or any of the audience members, I think we have one person.
Let's go ahead, do we have any, do we have any audience members? Evidently, Chris.
Yeah, which I'm not sure, I don't see who, they must have gotten off then, because I don't see Chris. Oh, that was fair, I bet that was Chris, I can't think of her last name, she was probably the...
Brittany?
Yeah, she was probably there, because she's not on there now, so...
Okay.
Okay, so the only non-city person we have is Ms. Pinkham from the pilot.
Leslie, do you have the list of Julie's items?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking Leslie might be Mr. Mayor's Leslie.
What's that?
She's on the comments.
No, I know, but I just...
I do know.
I was just looking at the list of participants, and they're, the only, so, yes. But does the council have any questions about the way that I formatted the code, the resolution for the code? I just have to say, Counselor Campbell, I love your cat.
Okay, then, let's go ahead, obviously, we don't have any public comment. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 8:02 PM.
Okay, and then the, I put both of the report and the ordinance in both Section 6 and in the Section 9 ordinance is in resolution, so if it looks like it was duplicated, it's just, I realize that you guys read it online, and rather than having you have to flip back and forth, I just put it in both sections.
All right.
Yes, we did. Okay, so then, now we're at the ordinance and resolution section.
Right. And we're going to have the first reading of ordinance number 671 amending business code for MFU, I still think Counselor Brennan came up with that one, it sounds dirty, provisions. All right, anyhow, we'll go with that. First reading, ma'am.
Well, there has to be, the council has decided they want to adopt the ordinance, so I can't do the...
Yeah, that's right, I thought without any response, and we were all, okay.
Yeah, so...
All right, let's go ahead, you want to adopt it?
Go ahead, make the motion if you want to.
Yes, ma'am, that'd be great.
I just accidentally autoscrubbed too far.
Okay, project.
Okay, I make a motion to approve ordinance 671 and ordinance amending ordinance 643, which adopted a revised Gold Beach Business Code and adopting provisions for mobile food cart, mobile food unit business license by title only.
Thank you, ma'am, is there a second to that?
All taken.
Counsel Pagano, a second. Discussion. Question?
Aye. Shoot, sorry.
No, that's fine, because I'm doing roll call. Okay, and then Counselor Pagano?
Aye.
Counselor Campbell?
Aye.
Counselor Kaufman?
Aye.
Okay, so the first reading by title only, I will do that quickly. Ordinance number 671 and ordinance amending ordinance 643, which adopted a revised Gold Beach Business Code and adopting provisions for mobile food unit business licenses. First reading, the second reading will be at the December meeting, and then it's enacted.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Now, as far as me is concerned, the first reading ordinance number 672, I thought I saw something where you...
Yeah, that, yeah, we're not doing that.
All right, good. So that will be...
I'm having a bad year, in case you guys have a...
No, everybody is having, I'm having a bad year.
It's because you do these every week.
Yeah, true.
Not really.
All right, miscellaneous items, we've got Counselor requesting topic discussions, is there...
There was something that...
I didn't see anything.
Right, I didn't want to put it in the packet. I've had a couple folks contact me about certain city facilities that are still closed due to COVID, and I just wanted to kind of explain a little bit, and then if people have any questions, you know, certainly just ask. So when, when the governor allowed, when the governor's office in OHA allowed Curry County to go into phase two in June, the park and most other things were reopened at that time. We did have the park closed from March until, I think it was kind of mid-June, and we had it blocked off where people couldn't go down there at all. The tennis courts were closed, the disc golf was closed, everything was closed. So during the opening in June, we went in, opened everything but the Kid Castle structure, and the reason for that was the rules that have come out from OHA have certain provisions within them that we are not able to meet. I know that other cities have their parks open. All I can say is that I'm not in charge of those cities, so I don't know what their circumstances are, I just know that we in Gold Beach can't meet the requirements. And the two big things are the cleaning standards and the ability to enforce the social distancing requirements at playgrounds, and we just, we just don't have, we don't have the, we can't meet that standard. So that's why our park is still closed. The other portion of it, for that and other city facilities that are still closed, specifically restroom facilities, it's also that it's a risk management issue, and our insurance company does not cover pathogens. And that isn't just a COVID thing, that's any pathogen. So if there were claims to arise from somebody, somebody that was injured because of what's going on right now, the city would be liable for that. And if we were not following the advice that has been put out by the state, then we would be doubly liable, because the information that's coming from the state is what we're required to follow. So, and I, and I realize, and I don't really want to get into that particular discussion here, but I realize that there is a certain segment of our population that doesn't feel that maybe these concerns are valid. However, because we are the government, we can't, at least I can't, I can't go against what the state requirements are, and I would not recommend that we do, because I simply don't want to be liable for something that we know so little about. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but the short answer is, is we can't meet the standards, and I don't know what other cities are doing, but it doesn't really matter for our purposes anyway.
What are we doing as far as the visitor center?
Visitor Center is still closed, and will stay closed until, until we get some kind of handle on this.
Why, and what are the provisions that are prohibiting the reopening of the visitor center?
Because that one is OSHA standards. I cannot meet the current OSHA requirements, I mean, I could barely meet them for here. We do, we are remodeling, and just because it's been closed, it hasn't been in a big hurry, but we are remodeling that so that it is more safe for the employees that will be working there. I don't know if any of you have been down to the visitor center before, but it's very open, it's unlike ours where we have an actual lobby. Counselor Brennan has a question.
Yes, Counselor Brennan, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I've been trying to find the closure restrictions, and things since September have changed. Oregon City posts on the internet, their playground equipment is open, it's not sanitized or clean. So I'm not sure how some cities can open it with a statement like that, and then we have to close ours to, for a rule that I can't find. I understand the bathrooms, but there's lists and lists and lists of things that are But when a city can come out and say, the playground equipment is open, it's not sanitized or clean, but they do recommend that people wear masks on children over five, and no more than 10 people at a time, they recommend those things, I'm sure they don't have a guard posted to enforce them. And I, with winter, especially winter coming on, with rain, we're supposed to get nine days of rain this week, I just, I don't see why something like that needs to be closed. Kids need something to do. You can't go to the library, because you can't touch your book, because then the book has to be sanitized for 72 hours, so you can't check out a book unless it's something you don't care, but something you can read or not. So kids can't go to the library, they can't go to school. I just don't understand why it's an outdoor facility, I don't understand why we have to have it closed. Like I say, I don't see the rules, I can't find them.
Thank you, sir. It is, it is most frustrating, there's no getting around that. If there were any way whatsoever to open that up again, I'd sure love to see it. In fact, Brookings has opened up their visitor center, well, not the visitor center, but the rest area across from Harris Beach, and that has been closed for months, but now that is open. A lot of this stuff is screwed, I may be honest with you. Anyway, Administrator, if you'd like to address...
Well, all I can say, Counselor Brennan, is that the OHA guidance that we work off of, and I will, I will send you the specific one that is specific for parks and recreation areas, says that there is a cleaning regimen that's required, and that we have to be able to post people that can ensure that social distancing is maintained. We don't have the ability to claim that facility twice a day, or to have somebody posted there at all times. And it's a risk management issue, like I said, if something were to happen, we would not, our insurance company would not cover us. So that's why ours is closed. I can't speak to what Oregon City is doing, I don't, I don't know. I don't know if they're not, I don't know. So I can't speak to why theirs is open.
Any further, Counselor Brennan?
Counselor Madison has her hand up.
All right, oh, I wanted to finish up with Counselor Brennan first. Anything further, sir?
No, thank you.
All right, Counselor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. So are we reporting to the insurance of CIS in that matter, Administrator Fritz?
Yes.
And so do they insure most of the other cities that might have their parks open currently?
That I don't know, I mean, I know that they insure a lot of cities and counties in Oregon, I mean, that's, that's where they get their name, but, but we are not covered, and that's something that CIS has made very clear this year. They send it out about once a month to remind everyone that pathogens are not covered, so any claim related to pathogens, there's even been concern about whether workers' comp claims would be covered, and that actually hasn't been decided yet.
I just wonder how, would it be to track somebody contracting something like that at a park? So we have, we have five part-time folks still on payroll for a visitor center, correct?
No, they, you, I was ordered to furlough them. They were furloughed.
Okay. So they're not currently on, they're not receiving pay from the city?
No, they haven't been since July.
So is the city eligible for COVID reimbursement for expenses outside of the norm in order to continue functioning? Is that something that we could look at hiring somebody to do part-time if we were going to be reimbursed for that?
Not if it was contrary to the OHA guidelines, they're not going to cover that. It's just, the park is open, the only thing that's closed is the, is the park, the Kid Castle structure. The disc golf is open, the park area is open, the pavilion is not, we're not allowing people to use the pavilion. But disc golf is open, the baseball field is open, the park is open, tennis court is open, basketball courts are open, in fact, we just got some new basketball hoops. So it's just the playground structure itself, because we cannot clean it, we can't clean it twice a day, and we don't have somebody on staff to ensure social distancing. And I, and I don't mean to be, I don't mean to be flip or whatever, but I'm not going to put somebody down there to be social distancing monitor, especially with, I don't feel that's safe, and I'm not, I'm not going to put a city employee down there to do that. I'm not, I'm not going to do that. So we're getting on to winter, the playground, the other thing that concerns me, and also concerns the Public Works Superintendent, is that we have an inordinate amount of visitors from out of state. is that we have an inordinate amount of visitors from out of state right now. And when I say inordinate, I mean ridiculously inordinate. And these people are coming from areas of, of known hotspots and-- And I know what you're saying, Councilor Madison, about how would they trace it back? It doesn't matter, it's a lawsuit. That's, that's part of it, is that people file frivolous lawsuits and we would not be covered. Normally, I, I'm not concerned about frivolous lawsuits because that's why we have CIS, because they cover us. And, and we get probably, that three to four a year that CIS swats down, those don't come to fruition. We've had two lawsuits since I've been here that have actually gone to court. Um, thankfully, we've won it both times. But if the city had to defend ourselves on a frivolous lawsuit, um, we don't have the funds to do that. And I, I just think that, given the fact that, um, things are getting worse, not better, that it's not a good time to be opening more things.
Councilor Madison, do you have anything further you'd like to say?
I do. We don't have any end in sight for the COVID pandemic. Um, and so I think we need to kind of look outside of the law. You know, not say it's a yes or no, but how do we look long-term into what kind of program or something that we can put in place so that eventually we can get that, that playground open for the kids? I know the swings at the visitor center are down too. Um, and I've seen a lot of, I've gotten a lot of calls. Becky Campbell, Councilor Campbell and Kaufman and I, I'm sorry, Campbell, have worked on some parks issues recently and with the, um, with the playground shutdown, there's been, um, a lot of transient activity down there and, uh, a lot of garbage. And I'm, I'm just really not satisfied with the way it is when I go down there, uh, to the point where safety is compromised. And so I really think we need to have a discussion about what we envision for our parks and how to make that happen.
Yeah, personally, Councilor, I agree with you. I'd like to see that thing as well taken care of. And I have noticed all the trash and what have you that's down there because there are an awful lot of people that are not obeying or following the rules. Unfortunately, that's just part of the, part of the game, I guess. But yes, ma'am, I think it would be good to have a further discussion. Yeah, Councilor Kaufman?
I have a question and it probably can't be answered tonight. Um, I'm thinking about the structure and if I remember correctly, it's the rubber-- If I remember correctly on the structure, there's the rubber chips on below and then it's plastic in some places and metal and it's wood in other places, correct?
Correct.
How on earth would you ever clean that? Um, if you're going to put a toxic chemical on it to kill a pathogen, what's that going to do to the rubber below? And then are you going to do something different on the plastic and the metal versus the wood? I mean, your first answer would be just fire hose, but that's not going to do it. So I don't know, you know, if anybody's researched, not options, but it sounds like people might want to hear that answer of what research has been done, of how that could even be done. Because, I mean, most of the stuff that we're using now is toxic. I mean, you're putting a hands-on measure in your hand, you know, as many times as you're in public, that stuff stinks, so it can't be good for you. Um, and then the stuff that we're spraying on stuff, how bad is that? Is that going to hurt the children? So then are we going to have a counter suit because of that? And I don't know the answer and I don't think you know the answer tonight. I'm not putting you on the spot. But that might be, um, some of the things that we need to hear to help us understand what we're at. Does that make sense?
Yes.
It does make sense. And the thing is too, from what I understand, I'm glad you brought this up as well, is that it's virtually impossible to keep all that stuff clean to begin with. You're right about the, uh, caustic chemicals that are being used as well too. And as far as I can understand and know, that the only real safe remedy to that is direct sunshine.
But they don't have any, I, I looked at that too, that there's no definitive proof from reputable sources that says UV kills it. Because if they did, that would be the easy answer. But everything that I've read so far is that, no, they don't know. That the only study that, that showed to be, from a reputable source, said it can kill it, but this, but the humidity and the amount of light have to be exactly right. So it's not a matter of--
No, I knew that, I knew that the humidity played a role in it.
Yeah, so if it's not exactly that, then it doesn't kill it.
Yeah, and what I was thinking of is that particularly during the summer, we don't have much as far as humidity is, and, uh, and of course, where Kid Castle is situated, it doesn't get direct sunshine until later on. Then look, it's a mess, there, there's no getting around it. It's, it's one big mess right now.
Yeah, and, and I understand, I, I really do. I understand everybody's concerns because I, I get the calls too. And then I also get the calls on the flip side also, but yes, we are in the middle of a pandemic. Yes, this is a horrible time in our lives. There will be an end at some point and it's, I, I, I think that, I think we have to err on the side of caution and that there is, there will be an end to this. It's not going to go on forever, but that's just my--
Uh, thank you, ma'am. Is there any further discussion on this? If not, then let's go ahead with the election results.
Um, what about the nuisance ordinance?
Hmm?
What about the nuisance ordinance?
What about the nuisance ordinance?
It's the second thing on the list. Could be related issues and then possible amendment to the nuisance ordinance.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm having a hard time here.
On the agenda report, section 10, it's got two items. One is COVID, the second is possible amendment to the ordinance.
I have, Councilor requested topic discussion and provisional election results.
That's all I've got, too.
On page 39, where that item is.
Now, I thought that we just got through with A, so that brings us down to B.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, I'm sorry. I changed the agenda, but I can change the report. Um, that should be, that was from last month. The, the agenda has the correct one, which is just the provisional, um, election. I'm sorry. Um, okay, so I, as Mr. Mayor said at the beginning of the meeting, the, the election results for, um, Mr. Mayor's race and for Councilor Campbell's race, those have been decided. The, the results for position two, um, between Beth Barker Hidalgo and Chip Bradley have not been decided. Um, if you go and look at the, um, website, uh, the Secretary of State website results, that, that evidently the counties all now upload to there. You used to be able to just go to the county's website. Um, as it stands right now, the votes are 576 Beth, uh, 577 Bradley. And so when, I, I, I have never had, you know, in the times that I've been the election, uh, person for the city, I've never had a race that closed. So, um, I knew that there was some threshold for recount. So I contacted Renee Cole, the county clerk, last week to find out what that process was. And, um, Councilor Kaufman posted some information, but I just, since, uh, uh, the meeting gets recorded, I wanted to just kind of go over that quickly so that when Curry Voices puts theirs up there, the information will be there. And basically, what Ms. Cohen explained to me was that, um, by state law, if a race is within one-fifth of 1% of the total votes cast in that district, then a recount is automatic. And so, um, for our purposes, the number of votes that were cast in our district, that puts the automatic recount number at two. So since the election is between, between the two of them is, is down to just one vote, automatic recall. So, um, however, by state law, the elections office, our elections office, can't begin that recount process until the election has been certified, which is by state law 14 days post-election. So that puts it at, um, she said that was going to be on the 18th. So during that two-week time period, um, people that have dropped off valid ballots at another county's, um, drop boxes, these are not mail-in ballots, but just your ballot, you can drop your ballot in any state ballot box, which I actually wasn't aware of that. Um, those, the clerks from other counties have eight days to get ballots to their respective counties. They don't open them at that county, they send them to the county of their origin. So say if somebody lived in Langlois and they worked in Coos County and they dropped their ballot off in Coos County, Coos County would send the ballot to us to be counted. So that, they have eight days to do that. So that could change the numbers if, if after that time. And then also during that 14-day period, they are looking at, uh, they resolve any problems with any ballots. Like if signatures don't match, um, that's, that's when they check to make sure and if they're-- So they are resolving all those issues. So then at, on the 18th, they can begin the process of recount. She said that she probably didn't think that would take more than a day, but, uh, would, she wanted to put it at the 20th just to give their office plenty of time. So on the 20th, we should know who the winner of that race is, but we will not know before then.
All right, thank you.
So as soon as, um, we know the, the results of that, and I believe, um, Ms. Cohen had already contacted, uh, Mr. Bradley and, um, Ms. Barker to let, let them know what this process was. Um, I would imagine that she is going to call them, but if she doesn't, I, I will call them when she calls me and then I will let the council and, um, Mayor, Mayor-elect know what the results are. So, um, it's still up in the air, we don't know who is, is going to win that race. And then just as a, um, interesting fun fact, which I did not know, is that, um, there are often ties in small districts in our county. And when that happens, the, um, by state law, the clerk actually does a name draw. So I thought that was interesting.
Clerk does what?
A name draw.
Oh.
So like if it comes down to it where, like she said, it usually happens with, with like water districts or fire districts where the candidates get an equal number. And so then their office puts the name in a hat and they draw a name out and that's who won the election. So, so, and then I also wanted to just publicly, um, since, since this does get broadcast, uh, thank, um, Ms. Cohen and, uh, election clerk, Shelley Denny, I think she's election manager, but I just wanted to thank their office, um, for all the hard work. I know this year was probably a miserable year for them. So wanted to thank them for the work they've done and that's all I have.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Well, do you have a report for?
Um, just, uh, the auditors left last, last week? A little week before, I don't know, everything's all run together. Um, I'm, the, the OSHA regulations that I was talking about last month related to COVID, those go into effect next week. So there's a whole bunch of stuff that, uh, me and the department heads have to get done before then and then some new, more regulations go into effect in December. So between the audit and trying to comply with the new OSHA requirements, that's pretty much took most of my time.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Uh, Councilor Madison, do you have anything that you'd like to report, ma'am?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Councilor Campbell and I both, um, have been going back and forth and working on, um, some parks issues and we don't have anything lined out that I think we want to share at this point outside of what, uh, Councilor Campbell's worked on. So I'm really excited for her to share that progress and that, um, the community garden is, um, moving forward. We've secured that position with that, uh, community garden manager so that if that opportunity falls through, they're in backup so that we don't see the wind to rear us again. Outside of that, I really don't have anything. I'll let, um, Councilor Campbell share from there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilor Brennan? Anything further?
You need to ask him, I'm here.
Yeah, there's some feedback.
Uh, Councilor Brennan, did you have anything?
I'm sorry, I was muted. I didn't know I was muted. Uh, no, I have nothing.
Thank you. Councilor Fegato?
I have nothing.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilor Campbell?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to update you a little more on the community garden. Um, Councilor Madison and I have been working on that. Uh, you packed up with talking about the community garden and the state of it and, uh, trying to get some revolution with that. Um, we do have a garden coordinator. Um, her name is Michelle. I'm trying to pull her last name out of my brain and it's not coming. It starts with a T. Anyway, she's a wonderful woman. Um, what we did is we did not have, uh, the correct combination for that lock. Either it was frozen up or we had the wrong combination. So, uh, we cut that lock off. And thank you, Councilor Madison. Her name is T U L L E S, Cohen. Um, we got a new lock, uh, cut the old lock off, got a new lock that is keyed and I dropped a key off at City Hall and then gave the new garden coordinator five keys and, uh, stuck the lock on the garden. So we now have a garden coordinator, a whole bunch of keys to it and a key at City Hall as well so that we can now access that garden whenever we need to.
All right, thank you. I want to thank you both personally, uh, for all the work that you've done with that. That, uh, to me is, well, it's a nice addition to the park if it's kept up. And, um, you know, just, just thank, thank you, both of you, for doing what you're doing there. Councilor Kaufman?
Thank you, sir. Um, glad the election's over, I think everybody probably is. Of course, our city election isn't over yet, but I am impressed with both, um, Mr. Bradley and Mrs. Hill, Barker Hidalgo, because they're both like, you know what, whichever one of us wins is fine. They're, they're both being very respectful about it. I was, I was quite impressed, um, with their attitudes. And I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being so gracious. Um, I was hedging my bets, I was a winner either way. So, um, because we get along really well. So I was fine just staying with Councilor, so I'm happy with that. Today, I had some appointments in Coos Bay and I got to meet with Teresa Haga from Coos Creek Development Business Corporation, I think it's called CCD. And, um, somehow or other, the county appointed me to their board. I think I accidentally gave them an application and they appointed me. So I did my first board meeting and then I met with her to go over more of what they do. And it was a really good, good discussion. So I think we have to remember that there is that available. They've given out $2.3 million in grants for COVID money and they're all between, most people are $2,500 to $5,000. That's a lot of small grants. She said there were 600 people got help, the largest one was like $44,000, but that was very, it wasn't very many, they were big. Um, it was also a lot of work for their staff. Uh, but that's a lot of little businesses that got help. And so that was impressive and I like what they're doing. Um, and I don't know if anybody knows, but our administrator is the chair of that committee. I don't know how she got that chair, so. So, um, and most things are going pretty good. Um, I was surprised, I didn't go into the store, but, um, somebody else went and got more and the shelves are somewhat bare. So the idea that we're going to have a shortage is probably true. Um, so people might be thinking about their armory given closet, not to hoard, but just be thinking ahead and, you know, if you buy one, maybe buy two instead and not 20, two. Um, because we may, we may make a moment through a shortage and that's already-- I know that Fred Meyer and Brookings have already warned people to start getting their baking supplies slowly because they may have a problem for the holidays. So I am not very happy with the COVID numbers are going up throughout the state and the nation. Um, it, it is a concern for us now here. Um, and I don't know if it's because of the travelers or because-- And I don't know if it's because of the travelers or because we're lax. I don't know. We're so tired of it. We don't deal with it anymore, so we forget. And I listened to Mayor Peep in Brookings. He does his 6 o'clock thing. I listened to him the other day, and he was talking about meeting outside with friends, and he thought he was doing a good job. Well, six of their families got, four of their families got, those four families got cold. And he said, so obviously, we weren't being careful enough. So it was a good morning for him. He's young and healthy, and his family's unhealthy. So but we have a population that we have to worry about. And I'm not worried about it myself. I think I'm strong enough. But I'm worried about others, and so I want to make sure I do my part. Just not just write it, keep it, and let it die, and then it'll go away. So with that, I will get back to Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. And I'm glad that you got yourself involved in some of these organizations and committees and what have you. To be real honest, I've always thought that, and I still do very strongly, that to be involved in these things, you know, in the past, when someone asks me to be involved, then I'm thinking, how many different things have I gone on already? But I always got a guilt feeling if I said no, then I'm thinking, all right, now if I need something, or the city needs something, how are these people going to treat us now because I said no to them? It's a hard line. It truly is. But whenever you can be on something that potentially, just like the ODOT, be on something that potentially can benefit the city. If nothing else, make sure that the city remains in people's consciousness. I say go for it. You know, it's a pain at times. You don't like going further and yawn at times. Believe me, I know. But to me, it's always been important. And one of the nice things about that, as I've said in the past, is that because of the makeup of the council, because of such terrific numbers that we've had in the past eight years, that has allowed me to do the things that I could not do to the extent that I wanted to during those first eight years. So I've been very, very thankful to you all, to the council, to the administrator. I haven't really had to worry about much at all here. It's always been in good hands. The last eight years, it's been in great hands. So I do want to also say, so let's see, I've got one more month to lead the meetings. I would like to say I'm going to pat myself on the back a little bit here. In the 20 years or so that I have volunteered for this city, I have never missed a meeting. And that includes the 16 years and one month, as it will be, as a mayor of this city. Every meeting that I was scheduled to chair, I have. And I take that as, and forgive me, but I take that as a little source of pride. But I don't know why I brought that up, except to give myself a little pat on the back.
See, you get a star for attendance.
Star for attendance. You betcha. So anyway, on the Tuesday will be on the 15th is when the change will take place. I intend, because I think it is important, as I did for Mayor Warnake, to swear you in as the mayor. And I do remain the mayor until you get sworn in. So at that time, I'm going to go ahead and do the swearing in. And I don't know, what I was hoping to do is to hold a party of sorts, and that I would even try to fund as much as I could as a sign of appreciation to, not only to celebrate your ascension, but also to thank personally everybody here in the city who has done such a marvelous job. And in the process, made me look good, made you look good. And I would just like to find some small way to thank you. So if we come up with anything, that'd be great. All right, that's it up. I gapped on much too long.